Welcome everyone to the meeting's house. And me, the reporter commissioner, I'm going to report. Commissioner Biden. At this time, I'll ask the city clerk, Beth Davis, to please call the roll.
Commissioner Jeff Sanford.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon Neesmith.
Here.
Mayor Tom Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Curtis Maglinger.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bob Glenn.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, if you're able to stand, please, and remove your caps for identification and the pledge.
Please join me in meditation or prayer, whichever is your preference. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings of living in this beautiful city on a river. We thank you for all of the regressive movement in our economy and socially in this great city. And we thank you most of all for the benefits of living in this great country, Lord, and all the blessings you provide. And so, as we prepare as a body of decision to come together tonight, help us make decisions that are pleasing unto you and move our community forward in a positive way. Bless all of our city employees, keep them protected and safe from harm. And more importantly, Lord, we'd ask for insight into how to make our community more loving and supportive, particularly in light of the impending possibility that SNAP food benefits may be cut off, Lord. Let's come together to breach, fill the breach. Oh, Lord, we thank you for all the blessings you provide, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight is a proclamation, or the next item, I guess I should say, National Care and Home Month, Care at Home Month and National Hospice and Palliative Care Week proclamation. So Sharon, I will ask you to go down and read the proclamation. I'll give you a thirty seconds warning.
Whereas National Care at Home Month recognizes the importance of compassionate, patient-centered care provided where people feel most at peace in their homes and communities. And whereas Hospice and Palliative Care Week, observed November 2nd through the 8th, 2025, honors the dedicated professionals and volunteers who provide comfort, dignity, and support to individuals and families facing serious illness or end of life. And whereas hospice and palliative care embody the values of compassion, respect, and community by helping patients live fully and families find peace through care, comfort, and connection. And whereas millions of Americans recovering from acute illness or injury or living with serious or life-limiting illnesses and their loved ones receive care from home care, hospice, and palliative care providers in communities throughout the United States each year. And whereas the central philosophy of home care puts patients first, ensuring a coordinated and person-centered approach to care, protecting patient choice and access to individualized services based on a patient's unique care needs and wishes. Now therefore, I, Thomas H. Watson, mayor of the city of Owensboro, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as National Care at Home Month and November 2nd through the 8th, 2025, as National Hospice and Palliative Care Week in the city of Owensboro, and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of home, hospice, and palliative care and discuss their healthcare wishes with their families. Signed and sealed this fourth day of November, 2025.
All right, so I am Hannah Cecil, I'm the marketing coordinator here at HPC. And then Pam Smith-Wright, and then this is Kaylee Gordon, Vicki Singleton, and then Blake Edge, our new CEO. So, oh, and then Beth back here, she's also on our board, I'm not trying to forget about her. So, thank you so much for having us. So, real quick, before y'all move on, like she said, November 2nd through the 8th is Hospice and Palliative Care Month. So, we're proud, we've been offering services for over forty-seven years in Davis, Hancock, Hopkin, and Muhlenberg Counties. And we offer hospice care, palliative care, as well as grief services. So, the grief services, those are free to anyone in the community, whether or not we have served you all through hospice and palliative care. And then for hospice and palliative care, if you need a consultation, if you're a loved one, you know, just call us, we'll come out for free. And you know, we've been really pushing, anyone can refer to hospice. That's a really big misconception that we've been fighting, you know, you can refer yourself, you can refer your neighbor, you know, friends, anyone. So, if you ever have any questions, just give us a call, we'd be happy to help y'all out. And thanks again for having us.
Next item on the agenda is National Homeless and Hunger Awareness Week proclamation. Commissioner Sanford.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Whereas many Americans are living paycheck to paycheck, forced to choose between basic necessities like purchasing food, paying rent, or going to the doctor. And whereas approximately thirty-seven point two million Americans currently live below the poverty level, forty-four million are at risk of suffering from hunger, and five hundred and eighty thousand are homeless on a typical night. And whereas the gap between increasing housing costs and stagnant incomes widens, the end result is that more people become homeless. And whereas there are many organizations in Owensboro committed to sheltering and providing supportive services, as well as meals and food supplies to people experiencing homelessness. And whereas transitioning homeless citizens towards self-sufficient requires multifaceted approach, which begins with targeting specific causes that lead to homelessness and a realistic plan of intervention strategies and services. Now therefore, I, Thomas H. Watson, mayor of the city of Owensboro, do hereby claim November 16th through 20th, 2025, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week and November as Homelessness Awareness Month in Owensboro, and encourage all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens and private and public nonprofit services and entities.
What a thorn between two roses, gosh. Anybody want to speak?
Well, I didn't come prepared to speak, so I'll just say this.
That's okay, that's good enough.
Thank y'all, it means a lot, it really does. Every day I do this, it just gets a little harder. But we're starting to see some light at the end of the tunnel, and we couldn't do it without the support of the city and county. So, thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, consider approval of minutes dated October the 21st, 2025. I'll make a motion to approve these minutes, could I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion, deletions, or additions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, thank you. Consider board appointments, Orangeport Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, reappoint Calvin Williams to a two-year term, expiring November the 2nd, 2025. Reappoint David Curry to a two-year term effective November the 8th, 2025. And appoint Amanda Green to a two-year term effective November the 8th, 2025. The Westland Shawnee Neighborhood Alliance appoint Jesse Ogilvy to, and Josh Ogilvy, and Robert Galvin III, and Susan Bartlett to a two-year term effective November the 4th, 2025. Apollo Area Neighborhood Alliance reappoint Rob Schell to a two-year term, expiring November the 2nd, 2027. I'll make a motion to approve these appointments, could I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, thank you. We'll move to ordinance, there will be no vote. City Clerk, Ms. Beth Davis.
Ordinance nineteen dash twenty twenty-five, and ordinance establishing procedures governing suspensions or revocations of the privilege to ride Owensboro Transit System buses, introduced and publicly read on first reading this fourth day of November, 2025.
Thank you, city manager.
Yes, Mayor, this is first reading of an ordinance creating a procedure for suspending the rights of riders to participate or ride on the transit system. Unfortunately, we do occasionally have unruly riders, and their behavior may be disruptive or at times even involving intervention from law enforcement. And so, we need a mechanism to suspend their privileges on the bus system. We didn't have anything in place that was approved to do so. So, this ordinance basically puts that structure in place, and it models it based on what we do for the Parks Department as well, to where we have a structure that's been in place for the parks for a considerable number of years to where park staff can do a short-term suspension, and then I can do a long-term suspension. And then if the aggrieved party wishes to appeal, then they have due process rights, and then they can come to you as the Board of Commissioners, and you can determine whether that suspension is upheld or not. So, this basically does for transit what we have already done for the Parks Department. Unfortunately, just the relative of what we deal with occasionally is that we have to suspend people from riding, and so this would give us authorization to do so.
Thank you, any other discussion?
I just had one quick question. So, what range are we looking at, would we ever get to a point where we would ban somebody permanently from riding the bus?
I don't know that we've done that, at least at Parks before. Typically, well, the suspension will be determined by the length of their offense. So, I recall anywhere from three months to a year, or perhaps more. I don't remember ever doing a lifetime ban, but typically it's commensurate with their offense.
Okay.
Thank you, city manager, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve this, what? What? Oh, I'm on the wrong one, sorry. Item number seven, please.
Municipal Order twenty-five dash twenty twenty-five, a municipal order authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement between the city of Owensboro and the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Department of Military Affairs, Division of Emergency Management, establishing conditions for receipt of FEMA Public Assistance Program grant funding. Read for approval on one reading this fourth day of November, 2025.
Thank you, I'll make a motion to approve, could I have a second, please?
Second.
City manager, please just tell us about this.
Yeah, happy to, as I'm sure everyone will remember, back in April, we had some severe weather and flooding. That event did trigger a disaster declaration. This municipal order authorizes us to participate in the FEMA funding related to that. We had some damage along the bank in McConnell Plaza area, so we're seeking federal funding to address that. And so, this grant agreement allows us to participate in that FEMA program.
Thank you, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign, motion carries. All right, city manager items.
First, we have personnel appointments, so new hire probationary full-time non-civil service appointment of Palia Barner, bus driver with the Transit Department effective November 17th. And then probationary full-time non-civil service promotional appointment of Stacy Allen to Assistant Occupational Tax Administrator with the Finance Department effective November 16th. Regular full-time non-civil service appointments of Nicholas Wellman, police officer with the Police Department effective November 4th, and Brandon Penigraff, captain with the Fire Department effective November 17th. I would just point out there, this appointment of Stacy Allen to the Assistant Occupational Tax Administrator is that position we just approved at the last meeting, so it's a reviving position that we've had in the past. Again, not a net new position, but we transitioned a clerk to a more of a supervisory position to give her more authority and for her to be able to do occupational tax audits as well.
Thank you, I'll entertain the motion.
Second.
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 Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, city manager comments.
Just one, Mayor, I think a week from today is Veterans Day, so just want to encourage people to go to the various activities that'll be taking place. In recognition of that, we do make transit free, so it's free to ride the bus service next Tuesday.
Good idea. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, communication from elected officials, Commissioner Sanford.
Just to follow up on the city manager's comment, it is Veterans Day on November 11th, and I believe there's a parade this Saturday. Thank a veteran for all of our freedoms. We're very, very fortunate in this country to be able to debate each other, disagree with each other, and that's all due to the sacrifices of all of our veterans. So, I just want to thank all the veterans out there, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Neesmith.
I'll just ditto Jeff, it's true, it's great, if you get an opportunity to speak to any of your veterans or family or friends, or you've heard their stories, it's truly amazing and makes us all want to make sure that we preserve and ongoing, remember what people did in the past to take care of us and know what we are responsibilities are for the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Glenn.
Thank you, Mayor, echo both Commissioner Neesmith and Sanford. And then also wanted to say, had a great event Thursday evening downtown with probably three, four thousand kids doing Trail of Treats, and...
What'd you dress up as?
A scary politician. But, no, it was great, thank you to Tim's team and Shaley's team and everybody at the city, that was a great event. So, thank you so much, Mayor, and happy Veterans Day.
Commissioner Glenn.
First off, I want to echo my colleagues' comments about our veterans and their incredible contribution to our freedom and our country, we should celebrate that. The Trail of Treats, I've worked at before, I didn't do it this year, but it is a wonderful event. And it's no small job, there's thousands of kids and hundreds of parents and a lot of candy. I want to thank our Public Works Department for the great work they're doing with early on leaf pickup and also for the paving of streets, particularly in my neighborhood, they have finished Trinity Hills, and it looks great. So, thank you. But more importantly, as I said in my prayer, if you are able to help with the food chain in our community to provide food for people, try to do so, because we don't know what the long-term effects of the SNAP cutoff, even though they're going to fund fifty percent, will look like, particularly in a community where thirty percent of our residents are under the poverty line. So, and that's it.
Commissioner Glenn, how did they participate in that, how could a community?
Oh, well, there's a number of groups that are, that either routinely collect food, like the Help Office, would probably be a good example, I don't want to trumpet everybody, but there's a number of different groups you could give to your support.
Okay, thank you. Well, I too want to ask people to turn out for the Veterans Day parade. We've had an abysmal turnout the last couple, three years, and it's almost embarrassing to be in that parade and see two or three people on the side. I happen to be a product of a World War II war bride, my mom's from Belgium, and experienced what it was like under the Nazi control. My dad landed on D-Day on Utah Beach, and his job was to string telephone cable from the beach to the highest point, set up an artillery position, and then take that cable back from the artillery position, back through the Germans to the artillery, and he earned a Bronze Star for sitting out in plain view of the enemy for thirty-six consecutive hours. As the shells were laying short, they'd hit that telephone cable on the ground, and he'd be out there spicing it up. And not sure if it was alcohol or what, but he sure did a good job of that and did earn the Bronze Star. And he actually stayed over there until nineteen forty-seven, so, warm spot in my heart for the vets. At this item, at this time, we'll go to open public forum. Members of the audience may address the Board of Commissioners on any matter of public concern that was not on tonight's agenda. Comments are limited to issues within the scope and responsibility of the commission. Commission member meetings are held to conduct city business for the benefit of Owensboro citizens and taxpayers at this time. Anyone who wishes to address the city commission, please make their way to the podium to be recognized. Speakers must state their name and address for the clerk's record, and limit their remarks to three minutes or less. Since item's not on the agenda, no response is required from staff or Board of Commissioners. The mayor reserves the right to extend the time to the speaker. So, open mic. Kevin? All right then, well, seeing there's no more business, I'll make a motion to approve this meeting. Could I have a sec, I have to adjourn this meeting, could I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, good night, Barbara. Good night.